Tonight Pastor Timothy Lee is going to lead us in education. What do you think?
Amen. Tonight, Lord, our prayer is a prayer of thanksgiving. Your word says, "Enter to His courts with thanksgiving and to His gates with praise." Tonight, we want to thank you for such a wonderful leadership group for our city. God that leads this city with equity and excellence. God that leads it with care and compassion. God, truly, whoever coined the phrase, "You can escape Cape," amen, named it right. God, it's a tremendous community filled with tremendous opportunities. And God, tonight, we're just thankful for a great city to live in, to raise our families in, to be blessed in, to meet folks there, wonderful character, wonderful opportunity to serve one another. God, thank you for all the hundreds of people that make this city great and make it go into the future filled with all kinds of potential. God, we give you thanks and praise in Jesus' name.
Please join me in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all.
We're going to begin this evening with a retirement presentation. Steve Williams. How are you, sir? Steve began his career with the city on December 21st, 1987, as a COVID inspector. On July 1st, 1991, he was promoted to Housing Assistance Coordinator, position he held until his retirement. He received the 1996 Employee of the Year Award for Administration and Development Services Department. For three decades, he was directly involved in or consulted on every housing-related program and event in Southeast Missouri. He became a subject matter expert on all things housing and served as an invaluable resource for countless organizations, developers, and citizens. He is very adept at leveraging multiple resources, financial and non-financial, to maximize project outcomes. He served on numerous committees, including the statewide Community Development Advisory Committee, having served as its president, and the Missouri Department of Economic Development Policy Committee, having served as its chairman. He also served on the Southeast Missouri Regional Planning Commission Board of Directors. In addition, he helped establish the Cape Area Family Resource Center. From home repair grants to housing tax credits to flood buyout programs, Steve was instrumental in helping the city and its partners improve the lives of countless citizens. His most notable accomplishments include: Community Development Block Grants, six programs, 170 homes, one former building, the old Cape Town headquarters, for a total value of $4,956,080. Emergency Shelter, Emergency Solution Grants, $3,879,000 plus. Flood Buyout, two different programs, $2,852,000. Neighborhood Civilization Program Grants, two programs, 11 homes, $806,000. The Old St. Francis Hospital demolition, $725,000. Federal Home Loan Bank of Des Moines, Iowa, three programs, $531,000. Rental Rehab Grant, 10 homes, $158,000. Housing Tax Credits, 14 projects, two developers, $53,302. Girl Missouri, $505,753. A total investment of $66,000,64,557. Now, that's amazing. Steve developed many relationships throughout his career. His colleagues knew that you'd call or stop by any time, they'd be greeted with a friendly welcome. He often conversed about what was going on in the community and shared his wisdom on many topics. Employees like Steve cannot be replaced. We wish him well on his retirement and will always remember all of the years and the way you devoted yourself to the people of our city. And this plaque says, "An appreciation and recognition of over 33 years of loyal and faithful service to the City of Cape Girardeau." Presented this first day of June 2021 with the City of Cape Girardeau in honor of the retirement of Steve Williams from service to Development Services Department 1987 to 2021. Thank you, sir. You want to say anything? You're welcome.
I'd just like to thank the City of Cape Girardeau for giving me the opportunity to do what I love to do. That's basically it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, actually.
Looks like to me you grew up all right. Mr. Meyer's city management career came with its challenges. He started with the city in 2009, right after a pretty good recession, and he's ending his tenure in a pandemic, sort of, although we're coming out of it. But under his leadership, the city now has survived but thrived in challenging times without the layoffs, service cuts, or shutdowns that troubled communities all across our nation. He credits all the city's successes to the innovative and resilient people of the Cape Girardeau community and the city organization. But it's Scott Meyer, and we're celebrating with Scott Meyer, his career and the community he has so faithfully served. Some of his 38 public service career highlights, not all of them with the city, but in public service is what matters. He supervised hundreds of projects for the Missouri Department of Transportation, including the $100 million building of some bridge. He oversaw construction and maintenance for Southeast Missouri State University, including the initiative to switch the campus from coal to natural gas. He served 12 years as our city chief operating officer, the longest-serving city manager in our history. He instituted over 20 city improvement programs. They go on and on. The Neighborhood Development Initiative, Automated Solid Waste, New Sports Place, Fire Station 4, Fleet Station, a lot of other building and renovation projects that are still going on. He initiated partnerships with corporations such as The Casino, with Air Service, with jury Southwest, Mid-America Hotels, to facilitate private investment within our community, raising $100 million in that private investment and creating 1,000 jobs. That's a big deal. He modernized the 911 Emergency Assistance Program by including radio and operability and a new CAD dispatching system. They go on and on and on.
Stay here a long time if you don't want to know.
Yeah, I know. And it's not over yet because we still have something to do later on this week. But we have this nice plaque to present to you that says, "An appreciation and recognition over 12 years of loyal and faithful service to the City of Cape Girardeau." Presented by the City of Cape Girardeau in honor of the retirement of Scott A. Meyer from his service as city manager 2009 to 2021. That's an empty little plaque. It's a little different. I'm going to hang that one on the wall. Thank you.
I, like I said, I'd like to see Steve Williams go up. And Steve exemplifies so much of what I was able to take credit for at times with the city, and it's really the staff that just loves their city so much, and it comes out in things getting better for citizens. And that also doesn't happen if you don't have a council that has vision and direction and is positive about it. And that doesn't happen if you don't have citizens that engage and are willing to vote for tax initiatives and to support different programs and come out and be a part of that. So, you know, I just, and be a part of that and being kind of the in-between between council and staff. But if you don't have all those components, nothing else happens. And, you know, I've been, I'm a person of faith and through my faith, I just believe that I was, had a calling to be here at this time. And when it came to the end of that time, I just felt like it's a time for somebody else to come and be a part of that. I saw the mayor just earlier this afternoon, I'm so excited about Dr. Haskin coming because he's going to have a whole other view of the city, and he's got a whole other breadth of experiences that he's going to bring to the city. And all those other components I talked about that takes to be successful, those are all still here. They're all great people, great leadership, great staff, great citizens that just want Cape to be a great place to be and live and play, and we're so fortunate to have that. And so, next to all, yours is going to be twice as good as the last one. Look forward to it.
Trying to get back to the normal meeting, Mayor. Well, even though we do have a reception later on this week for Scott, he'll say it soon, I'll mention that in a minute. This being probably his last council meeting, I thought I'd do it.
Well, I think this is the only time I've been surprised at what was on the agenda. Thank you all.
We'll go right into communication reports, Council.
Oh. My, I hope my mic is working. One thing I, is that one? Yes, cool. First thing I wanted to do, I wanted to thank Scott for his tenure at the City of Cape Girardeau. You really have been such a steady handle, a wheel, and it's just a fantastic, you've been a fantastic person to learn from as a first-term council member. And so, I just can't thank you enough for the guidance you've given me personally over the past three years and just the way that you've governed the city of Cape. And so, it's really, like you said, for at least 12 years, it's been great, and the next 12 years will also be great. So, thank you very much for your service at Cape. Cape Girardeau is such a dynamic place, and every time you turn around, there's something great coming on. This coming week, with the Great Race coming into town, that's a fantastic opportunity for people to get out and engage. Just this past weekend, with the Summer Arts Festival at the River Campus, once again, you just see how dynamic this city is and the people of this city are. I wanted to congratulate the staff over at the River Campus for the first Lanford-Wilson Festival. It's the New American Playwright Festival. And if you didn't get to interact with it this year, you'll surely be able to interact with it in future years. But this is a unique opportunity where it brings Cape Girardeau to the center of the stage for new American playwrights. And so, they had 750 submissions from playwrights around the country to be live reads here in Cape Girardeau. Playwrights that attended Yale and all different types of institutions submitted their information, came here to Cape Girardeau last week, engaged with the River Campus, and conducted live readings of their plays. So, really a fantastic, unique, creative process that happened here on the banks of the Mississippi, the Mississippi River at the River Campus. So, just, I wanted to congratulate those folks. I wanted to congratulate Scott, and it just shows you how dynamic of a community we are, that there's things that are happening across the board every single day in this town.
Anybody else?
I also share the same sentiment regarding Scott. Scott, thank you so much for your service. This is my first year, it's been a tough year as an incoming council member. So, thank you for being my guiding light and that trusted source for information for me personally. We'll talk about how we really feel about you on Thursday. Just kidding. But again, I can't thank you enough personally for your guidance as a council member in this role. And again, also congratulations to Steve, so just a welcome to his retirement. And we don't always take the opportunity to congratulate members of our community when they move on to other roles. So, I want to take this opportunity to congratulate Reverend Renita Green, who has accepted a new position at the University of Dayton and acknowledged that her future absence from Cape Girardeau is going to be felt across the board. Her service to the city includes her work with the People's Church and the St. James AMB Parish, where she and her volunteers provide a shelter for those in need, including providing homeless resources, warming centers, clothing, showers, and other necessities. Also, she's worked in community outreach, organizing, conducted community crisis intervention meetings, which I had the fortunate opportunity to attend. And she's been an exceptional resource for our most vulnerable populations. I also commend Renita for her commitment to the city. She is one to, she's the one that asks us the most difficult questions, so she engages us in talking about those difficult subjects that we normally wouldn't have talked about. So, thank you, Renita, for that. She's also provided an avenue of communication and a voice for those community members in need. And thank you again to Renita for her thankless efforts in making Cape Girardeau a better place for all people, and we will miss her.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I've got a couple of things, Mayor. I brought with me the project timeline from Bernstein Young. So, I'll send some copies out to you all about that, what's going to be going on. We had our first kickoff call with them last week, and then this week, we'll kind of get down, dig into the timeline. Steckleton and Charlie Burks and myself will be handling that. So, that's good news, got a lot going on there. Also, part of that is the first 50K program. I sent you guys a MML today about that. Reach out to them for some specifics, but they've got their kickoff. They'll be having them in probably in the next 30 to 45 days. Those candidates will be in once they're final, pinpointed down to the final 10, I believe. So, that's exciting. And then, the last thing, Scott, thank you. The last five years, since I've been a council, I've learned a lot from you, what to do, what not to do, what not to say sometimes. Whenever I sat in your office the first day, I kind of looked around Cape and I said, "Well, Scott, there's only really two projects you haven't done yet, and that's the airport and City Hall." And here we are today, and, you know, really talk about having those pretty much done too with the help of Molly and the rest of the staff. But it's amazing what you've done, and you've left a legacy that's going to be hard for anyone else to reach, and I appreciate your, all of your leadership. Thank you.
Anybody else? If not, I want to reiterate what Dan said about the Great Race tomorrow evening downtown. Cars should be coming down Broadway between 5:00 and 5:15. And by the end of the park, there are, possibly, there are going to be 150. Last I saw, 120, but I still think there's going to be 150. Scott's retirement reception is Jose Center, 336. There's a little retirement reception for Julia Friday evening at Top of Mark, 4:30 to 6:30. And I think you all received information about the July 4th festivities. The Bicentennial mural that's been traveled all around the state of Missouri is going to be revealed that evening or that afternoon in the arena, and that's going to be a big, big, big deal. There'll be some little comments on the bicentennial celebration inside of the arena. Then we'll go outside for the normal events and have the presentation of the Spirit of America Award. The graceful man will be there playing music, and it's a neat, neat, neat way to get together in the fireworks show was after that. So, let's hope for tomorrow weather, and if anything comes off, that is. If you have anything else, Scott, I can't. I can't say enough about what you've done. You've led me as the new mayor, give the direction, and we'll say a little more on the weekend.
Very good.
Okay, Scott, so you stand.
Just a couple of items. Just want to reiterate to council, if you plan on attending the Fourth of July festivities, please let Julia know so she can get you your tickets. And then, also, just to let me know, we just got word that the Minnesota 74 access improvement is approved for a cost care program last week, so that will help us to get that on the calendar.
Good. If there's nothing else, we'll move into items for discussion. The first is appearances by advisory board applicants. Anybody here this evening? Who's she is? Jessica. How are you?
I'm good, thanks. How are you?
I'm good.
Good evening. I'm Jessica Hill, and I've had the opportunity to appear before you several times over the past few years in my role as Director of the State House, including many times with Steve Williams. But this evening, I'm here to talk about my interest in serving on the Cape Girardeau Public Library Board of Trustees. I've served on a variety of boards, as I outlined in my application, and I truly enjoy serving the community in this way. As the leader of a local nonprofit, I appreciate a board's responsibility for fiscal guidance and policymaking, but what has strong means to apply for a library board is simply my love of libraries, reading, and books. I credit my love of books to my parents, both of whom were public school English teachers, and avid readers. Since getting my first library card in middle school, I've had a library card everywhere I've ever lived, from the massive St. Louis Public Library System to the smaller-scale Andere County Public Library in my hometown of Kirkville. Since moving to Cape Girardeau 12 years ago, my family and I have been patrons of our city's excellent public library. My kids have grown up participating in the children's program, and I taught my son Jacob and daughter Caitlin, who are now 17 and 14, how to read with the Read to Succeed books we checked out from the library when they were kind of earners. It's rare that a week goes by without a visit to the library for more books and music. My husband jokes that he's surprised there are still books left in the adult fiction section that I haven't read, and I tell him the nonfiction section is still waiting. I would be very honored to serve the library as a member of its Board of Trustees, and I appreciate your time and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Provide their work. If not, we'll move on to the planning and zoning report. Mr. Reed, Alvin.
Great, thanks for having me. The summary of the June 9th, 2021 Planning and Zoning Commission leading agenda is as follows. We had an application for an exception to driveway policy guidelines at 2404 Williams Street. The applicant was Scooter's Coffee. The request was to increase the size of the driveway for access ingress and egress. The vote was eight in favor, no one in opposition, and no one abstained. The next item on the agenda was the R and D subdivision record plaque that is located at 2601 and 2605 Ordeena Lane. The plaque combined two lots to form one new lot for the homeowner. Eight voted in favor, none in opposition, and no one abstained. The next item on the agenda was DNK Stock Subdivision Record Plaque. That involved an address at 10 Beenville Avenue. The plaque also combined two lots to form one for the homeowner, and the vote there was eight in favor, none in opposition, and no one abstaining, subject to staff's comments being successfully addressed. And the final item on the agenda was the, I don't know if you pronounce it, Lyle Mac or Little Mac, East Third Subdivision Record Plaque, that is located on Sal Avenue. The plaque creates a new multifamily development with 16 townhouse lots and one common ground lot. So, the vote there was eight in favor, none in opposition, and no one abstaining, subject to the staff's comments being successfully addressed. And that concluded the items at the last meeting.
Okay, any questions?
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Last meeting, we mentioned the fact that in order for a city council to consider submission of the use tax to the voters of City of Cape Girardeau, we had a certain panel, and we elected to have that discussion this evening, just to be sure, ideas and comments. So, I'm open to anybody's comments.
I think that this is something that I would like to see come up in one of the next two election cycles, whether or not it's, I think we've missed the vote, obviously, in August. If we can get on the November ballot, I think you'd be very impressed for us to do so. And just for the public's sake, you know, this is the Wayfair Supreme Court decision. This allows the state of Missouri and the municipalities to collect online sales tax. So, it levels the playing fields for our local employers who are currently battling it out, and Americans are shopping online more and more often, and it's hurting the bottom line of the, if local companies and employers that give to our schools, the local companies and employers that put their logo on the back of a soccer team t-shirt, and we've got to level this playing field, and I'd like to see it come on the ballot sooner rather than later.
When we brought this up before, you mentioned that there was possible with MML, more of an orchestrated effort or timeline. Has there been any more conversation of that or anything? Maybe? I have not heard anything from MML. We don't have to do this until our second meeting in July, on July 19th. I do know that, talking to the city administrators, Scott, see that they want to do it in November also. I think Jackson may also do it in November. Not for sure yet, but there are many, many entities around the state who want to do this as soon as they can in November. We're probably the first election, August just got here too quick. I don't look at this, it's always been misnamed in my mind as a use tax, it's an internet tax. It's a tax for items that people buy when they shop online, and everybody shops online for something at one time or another. And it levels the playing field, like Dan said, with our local merchants. And like Scott said before, you've got companies like Amazon, the richest company in the world, who is just getting richer and richer, and they deliver thousands and thousands and thousands of packages in Cape Girardeau using our streets. If they have a package stolen, our police department has to come respond to that. It's about time that our citizens not continue to pay that money to Amazon, but at least make it a level playing field for our local merchants and pay that sales tax. It's, the county has that tax, and it's skyrocketing with COVID. Last I saw, it was up 40% over last year. More and more people with the COVID pandemic are shopping online for all sorts of things, and it's just, it's going to increase, and it is, it's slowly doing this. And we have been really lucky through this pandemic in that being a regional hub, what came to our city to shop, they came for Lowe's, they came for Lennar's, they did all these remodeling projects because they weren't going anywhere, they weren't going on vacation. And the sales tax went up, and we kept thinking it was going to go bad, but that's passed us now, and we're kind of getting back to some sense of normalcy, so. of normalcy, so, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna lose that and we're gonna get back to the, the level where our taxes just level off as continue to go down. Uh, we've got to face it and, and, uh, our merchants, uh, need that playing field leveled with everybody else and I too want to put it on the ballot in November.
The one thing that I would add and all three of you make phenomenal points, the one thing that I keep looking at is that it is getting tougher and tougher for us to find employees for the city of Kate. I sent you all an email about, I saw Penny and, 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 and how hard it is to find hard timers and giving one percent increases to our employees, city employees is not going to continue to work over the next ten years. And unfortunately, since I've been on council there, there've been some years where we couldn't give anything and sales tax is our number one piece and this will go directly into the general revenue and general revenue funds increases to our city employees, it funds fire and it funds police. And we've got to get our residents behind this and it's an internet sales tax that we must do for our employees and for the reasons that you guys discussed.
I mean, I, I completely agree just that, that's the point I was going to make is that it becomes harder and harder to have a balanced budget with all of the goods and services that we want the government of the city of Kate Gerardo to provide. And so if we still want to have those services, we're gonna have to find a way to capture that because, and I would argue with anybody, this is not a new tax, I mean, I'm as specifically conservative as it comes, it's not a new tax. People have changed their shopping behavior to buy the same items that now don't have a tax on it. And so now it gives an advantage to the online retailers and our local bricks and mortar that that money would come back for our services that we don't get to capture anymore.
Well, in some cases, we're paying, when you buy something online, you're paying that, that tax, it's just the fact that we're not capturing it at the local level.
It doesn't come back to us, it goes into the pockets of those retailers. But I, I, to go back to the original question, I think that sooner the better. I have said it before, but I think it's vitally important we do it kind of orchestrated with the other municipalities around us that also need to pass it, that way it's a shared messaging and it gets some of this convoluted messaging from the past out with a clear message that people understand fully what it is and eliminate some of that confusion. And the more that we have a consolidated effort with the Scott Cities and the Jacksons and the other municipalities, these people work together, you know, they have their kids playing ball teams together, they're all talking, and if they're all talking the same language, it's more likely to pass.
And I think that's something that the mayor and I can have a conversation with that we're actually on magnet tomorrow and Scott City and Jackson are, and both chamber directors will be in that room. I think that's definitely something that we need to discuss, going back to what Dan said, sooner than later, I think November is, is when we would want to push for it.
Okay. My, my only, and I don't want to disagree with anything because I'm totally supportive of what everybody's saying, um, uh, I just want to throw out, speaking of, which we're bringing up and then Robbie, um, the, the concerted effort of the message, um, has there been any talk, mayor, that you know of, of, of actually forming a committee or of individuals taking, uh, taking that helm?
Not that I've heard of, but I think that will, that will happen, yeah.
Well, yeah, I guess that's my point I was getting at.
I, I, not to break, I think it's the same thing like when we did TTF or when we do PRS two or one, I think we need, I think that.
Well, the, the, there was an official committee.
Yeah, yeah, no, I believe that needs to be the same thing.
Right.
I don't.
Right, I guess my.
You want to lead that up?
I, I, I'm not, but I'm, but I'm super supportive.
But this is so, but I, I've been saying this, this is so important to our community, so important that it needs all of the expertise that we have from whatever, any entities within our communities to really create that catchy, simple, consistent messaging behind it.
Did, if we, does MML, does the passage, does it say exactly what the language has to be on the ballot?
Yeah, the state statute is very clear, obvious to the language that has to be on the ballot. It is called a use tax, it cannot be called an internet tax.
Well, and that, I mean, that, that issue alone might need some of that, sharp focus.
That's where your message has to be clarity.
Right, can you add, uh, in parentheses?
That's what I.
And that's sales tax?
Now, the, the most that has been done with, with cities over the last number of years is to add some language that says in an attempt to eliminate the, uh, the, uh, the current sales tax advantage that out of state sellers have over in-state, uh, merchants. That kind of language, but the statute language has to be followed and if it isn't followed, then the, then the tax could be invalidated.
To Stacy's point though, just like in messaging on any of the other taxes that we really, like, there's been committees formed, um, and then funds raised and then messaging, I think those are two different, two different pieces, so to speak. I definitely think that there's a campaign that could be out there that we need to, to get some, some of our allies as far as the city aspect and to help us with that messaging and then at least they will be educated enough to when they go in and it still says use tax, they know exactly what that means.
And possibly some way to reference the state law that was passed that is, that why this is on the ballot now, because now we have state law that was passed, we're the last state, you need to have it passed.
And then, and all of those things can be part of the, the whole, um, selling of the, of the proposition with the public information campaigns, but the statute says the language that has to be in the ballot proposition.
The key to, the key to the Wayfair legislation that actually has passed now changes where it's collected, so, so currently they, you collect use tax, you know, you're supposed to pay it voluntarily when you pay your income tax, so we currently have the use tax, so it's, that's what it is, but this changes it to, to have, uh, sellers collected and then they have these nexus and all of that, so that's, that's the game changer that will then change and, and then you get the, the much, uh, more complete collection of the tax and the return of the tax fee to the entity, so that's, that's what changes with the legislation and that's what makes it so, so valuable now and fairer, it's fairer to everyone now because of that, so I think Molly got one.
I was just going to remind mayor and council members that we, we do have a precedent of when we have the census, um, we, we pooled our resources with some of our fellow communities to get the messages out, so I think that we can definitely establish the same type of, uh, scenario here where we can pool our resources with all those communities that are going to have this on the ballot in November, so our, our messaging is consistent and far reaching, so I think that, um, if you want to lay the groundwork tomorrow, we can certainly have a take from that.
Is there some limit though to what city staff handles? You're saying, so you're saying just?
Absolutely, uh, the, the city, city staff and city resources are limited to only provide information so that we, we cannot ask people to vote in a certain way or skew information to imply to, uh, to, to vote in a certain way, we can, we can, uh, tell people about the election, give them the facts and tell them to vote, uh, but we can't tell them how to vote, but it's still, it's a, it's still valuable, then it's valuable that we can, we can work together as, uh, Molly said, um, but then there is another part of the campaign, which is the committee part that then can, can truly advocate, uh, in a direction that, that chooses.
Which I can imagine this will be front of the priority list for all the area chambers that could hopefully carry the torch too with some of that as well, so.
Yes. One is your right. Okay. Anybody else? Any other comment?
So do you want us to prepare a, uh, an order for next meeting?
You can prepare for next meeting.
And unless we get any other information, MML or something or?
Sure, that's easy, cool.
Okay. All right. Are there any appearances this evening or any items not on the agenda?
Good evening, good evening, good evening, um, for those of you who don't know, Pastor Scott Johnson, so far, semester's here, been a while, I have some things to sign, so I have to kind of reevaluate something, congratulations, man. Um, just wanted to bring an awareness to the city that, uh, I don't know if you saw the story here that's on the news, that, uh, since you asked, sorry, we're a part of it, uh, a, uh, R-Cor grant, uh, rural opioid sponsoring over about, it's like twenty-nine different counties from Madison down to Mississippi, I believe it is, I'm actually chaplain over the Southeast Missouri Recovery Association over like fifty-nine different counties. And so been working with Mission Missouri and bringing different things into our city. Our new address is at, uh, six twenty-three South Silver Springs Road. Um, we teamed up with, uh, Service Masters and, uh, KFC Construction Group and, uh, Southeast Management Solutions, so we now have, uh, some townhouse, new residence apartments down in the South Side of Cape. Um, we are just about ready to finish, so they will be fully furnished, transitional housing coming with KFC's managing and different programs out of that. We actually have a wage list where they will have a, sort of like an HOA concept to it, no, no tolerance, it's, it's a standard, raising standard living in the South Side community, we will have, um, surveillance cameras on the, uh, on the homes, like no tolerance, um, I want to say to the chief and the police department here, I stand with them regardless of who don't, I don't have time for that stuff, um, and all of our first response, so, um, we eliminate that, don't talk, don't tell, here, here's the camera, here's what happened, it's just that simple, because as you were saying, piggybacking off, you're saying, get into a kind of, a, a mindset of, you have to have people that really wants to change and unfortunately, a lot of the opposition comes from the people that you're trying to bring to change to, but it's never going to stop, it never has, never will, you know, either you want it or you don't, if you don't, we deal with the ones that do it, and so, uh, I'm tired of going to people's. I'm tired of seeing people get killed, tired of their phone calls in the middle of the night, people getting shot. It's crazy, man. I've been in the city all my life, almost fifty-two years and fifty-three years in July, they could have told me our city would turn into this, but I love my city, I'm standing up for it, but I had to fight it by myself, I believe in it, and so being said, uh, even with all that, this housing is a rapid response grant that came about, uh, with the COVID and all of that, and so I'm here just to say to all of you at the council and everybody in this room and anybody who lives in the city, no management, I, and I don't have to be out front on anything, and so this is an invitation, there, it's not about Soulful Harvest Ministries and Pastor Scott Johnson and my wife, this is about us as a community, as a city. My goal is for Cape to be known as a hub of change and I tell people, if I say anything wrong or don't do it right, don't talk about it, just educate them so I know what to do in the near future, but I say to the entire council, if, if you guys want to be a part of this, the entire city, it's just as simple as just letting us know that we can all work together, this is about us, this is not just about the South Side community, there's murder and violence and crime happening all over our city. I live out of my Sherwood Drive and my neighbors have been overwhelmingly sponsored to the fact that I've done donations for the, uh, we need furniture and things like that and bedding for the properties, American mattress have been also like, and so it, it's happening so fast, it's like, oh, you know, thank you, I just wanted to bring that to the awareness that there is a lot going on behind the scenes that you all didn't know about, we're still out here doing, doing what we do, trying to do the best that we can to make a difference for our entire community, so if you guys want to know more about it, if you want, I need volunteers, uh, we're actually getting people trained because out of our services, uh, licensed Missouri recovery support provider, we offer that service at councilman and the Middle Hill Council and we are officially opening up a, uh, Soulful Harvest Ministries, uh, community outreach center out at, uh, six, uh, I think it's six twenty-three South Silver Springs Road, so we just about got that ready, I got to get the computers and some other stuff put in there tomorrow, and so that's going to be moving pretty fast, but it's for our, our entire city as a whole, we, we, we're trying to work with everybody and anybody that, no top, no, no negativity, none of that, I've had enough of that, enough of that, so we're doing our part to take a stand against everything that is negative in our city, so I just wanted to bring that to you guys' attention and, uh, if you need anything or, or no more body, just get in touch.
Need a phone number?
Hmm?
Phone number?
Phone number?
You don't have to give it out publicly.
Oh.
We would love to have.
No, my, my phone number is our ministry number, five seven three.
Okay.
Two two five eight zero nine seven. Twenty-four hours.
Ready for some pause. Thank you.
So, just wanted to pass that on.
Thanks, Scott. Appreciate it.
Scott, I don't know if you, um, have a chance yet, but we do have a registration program for cameras, if you're willing to register, uh, the police department, uh, will, um, have them pre-registered, so if you have a, if you have a situation where you need to use the cameras, it makes it a little easier, so I don't have a registration program.
Absolutely, I think, I swear, I swear something about that. Thank you for your advice.
No problem.
Absolutely.
Thank you for the ministry.
Thank you, Scott.
Yes.
Anybody else? About any items not on the agenda, this is me.
Good evening, my name is Mrs. Stasia Bailey, my husband and I are residents at Southeast Mississippi State University, I'm a member of Delta City Players Super Team Incorporated. Uh, my family have been in Tallahassee, Florida for the last four plus years and we find ourselves back here as we're in our summer home, um, we have a property on Bumming Street, um, I called some of our great councilmen and our, I'm the mayor, um, I do appreciate everything that the city has been doing thus far and as we've been away, as I come back to the city, I find myself with three little ones in top, all of them are under four and I do see some beautiful things that the city has been incorporating and bringing as we try to bring our family back and our good, um, middle horse type people here in our city, um, but I also see that there's a problem, and I want to find myself interjected in the community and participate however I can so we can move our people to bring our great military town back. Um, my, my, my grandfather, um, a Muslim man, as I am a Muslim woman, as a Muslim family, I find myself putting my hijab up as a great hat he used to wear, that was the dazzle, but, um, uh, he was, um, may he rest in peace, um, a Viet, uh, a Vietnam vet, so I'm a proud American and I'm proud to put an American flag at our mosque in Michigan here, so we are represented there. Um, I'm a little nervous, it's easier in front of the children to do this than it is now, um, but I just, I just want to commend all of you folks and thank you for everything that you've done in the last twelve years. I was a student then, I had a little bit, um, fun, but now in retrospect, now that I'm a mother, um, I do see where I can participate in our great democracy and, um, I, I came in under the great Dr. Dawkins, I call him great because I'm a recipient of the president's spirit of war, as well as the river campus has been a, a safe, a, a peaceful place that I can go with my family, just with everything. Um, so, um, I do commend, um, our community leader as, as, as we try to move our community as well, but I, I apologize as I recall everyone, um, as I try to kind of get our, our community world, my neighborhood back where it used to be, um, I will, then, um, I'm going to learn the ropes, of, of course, I know my place in a world of men, but I'm going to learn the ropes and see if I can, who commits or what have you, and kind of show my children how to participate in a democracy and make sure we're present as we need to be. Um, like I said, we're here for the summer to see how the city is, Tallahassee was a, a great city, but it was more a black and white and I'm more of a middle horse type person, so I, I'm, I'm looking at our military town in school and our, our great police department, I know that if I'd even met me, I, I came and introduced myself as my son, not only does he think he's a pirate, but he thinks he's a policeman, but, um, but other than that, I just wanted to introduce myself, my husband and I are tag teaming, so that he'll be at the next meeting, as he's at home with his children today, but I'll be, um, I'll be at home the next meeting and he'll be here, so you can both just meet us and that's pretty much it, um, I take my seat and thank everyone for being here, um, Mrs. Bailey, I'm kind of old school in that regard, but, um, thank you again, I sit in the office.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments.
Yes.
Anybody else to appear before the council or items not on the agenda? If not, we'll move into agenda review, Scott.
Okay, we have, uh, no public meeting, uh, no public hearings tonight, um, on our content agenda, we have the second and third readings of our last, um, um, last meeting's ordinances, we have the second and third reading of the, uh, Federated Subdivision Number One, um, food pantry i- in that area, uh, there on Frederick Street, um, and we have number three is the, that's chapter twenty-five. This is the one that has the storm, stormwater management facilities where we have, um, made the change, and we've been talking about for some time with developers and everyone, now we're going to start, uh, having developers put in the D E, uh, when we have easement for, uh, detention basins and stormwater things, so this is a pretty big change, and so we've been talking about it, talking about it, so this is the last, uh, action, is the second and third reading tonight, that's, um, some we worked together with, uh, um, D N R on the MS four committee, which, um, which we had to renew. Uh, number four is the second reading of the state court automation surcharge, this was a mandate from the state to, uh, add this surcharge to our court filings. Uh, number five is the consolidation grant agreement for planning grant, uh, this is for R and P O, uh, we do this yearly, and, um, the second third reading of that. Number six is the, um, uh, capital expenditures for the mural painting on the wall. Uh, as you changed it the last time to go fifty-two thousand eight hundred, or up to fifty-two thousand eight hundred dollars for the mural, uh, but that number will be reduced by any grants or other, uh, raising of funds that they do prior to the completion of the mural. Um, then we have number seven, which is the annexing of land up at thirty-nine twenty Bloomfield Road to the Canes. Uh, number, uh, eight and nine is, is also from the annexation that extends the boundaries of Route Six, and then zones it is R one. Number ten will be, uh, the agreement with Farbar with concreters, uh, to avoid that concrete tree repair work. Number eleven is the, uh, now licensed demodering for Old Town Cape for banners and holiday decorations. Uh, this wipes out all previous agreements and replaces it with one master agreement for that, as we now starting into Spanish Street and up the, uh, steps there, so, uh, that, that completes that. Uh, twelve is a resolution for the, uh, acknowledging receiving annexation petition for J M D Industries out on, uh, Route K. And then thirteen is the approval of naming or request application of Cape Rock Water Plant Turning Room, this is in, in honor of, uh, uh, Mr. Kevin Perister, I think maybe his family is here tonight, and, and so glad you're here, and, um, Kevin's just loved this city, and all he gave to the city, and this is just a small token that, that we can do to recognize him. Uh, there is going to be a formal presentation, uh, later on, I think in the fall, where we're gonna celebrate thirty years of partnership with Alliance, and we'll do it that time, and so thank you so much, uh, for being here, and, and just know how much we, we care and love Kevin and, and the whole family and the dedication of them. We don't like anything, it's not just the worker, it's, you know, when we got the callouts, it's, uh, the family that's left behind that has to fix everything, so thank you for, for your part in that. Um, that's the contingent, are there any items that, uh, you'd like to move to the contingent, uh, councilman?
No, I was just gonna say I looked out and looked like three pennies feasters.
Probably, I was literally gonna say the exact. It's like looking at the same face looking down.
I was just like, uh.
Probably not a good thing.
It just shows, you know, it just shows the power of genetics and everything, because all of you guys, even like your body language throughout this entire meeting has all been the same, so it's been really hilarious to watch, actually, from this point.
I know.
That tells you how much Kevin impacted our lives.
Yeah. Absolutely. All right, we do have three, uh, new ordinances tonight, we have a temporary construction easement, or authority to get temporary construction easements right away from various property, uh, along the new independent street project, um, first reading of that ordinance, and then we have, um, first reading of a special tax bill to collect monies from the demolition and nuisance, um, abatements from five twenty-nine South Benton Street under, uh, chapter seven, chapter thirteen. And then sixteen is the record plat for R and B subdivision, this is, um, they mentioned it earlier, uh, the pipeline zoning that has to head, it combines two, at the end of that, uh, of that street, there's two, uh, usually two houses there, they tore one house down, and they combined the two lots together. Um, then you have, uh, the appointment, uh, two appointments, you have the appointment for the Board of Appeals, and, uh, that, we've had one candidate, um, Mr. Geringer, and, uh, then, uh, the Public Library Board Directors. I think you have your, uh, preferences there, uh, to appoint those members. And, uh, then we will have a, uh, short closed session tonight. Mayor?
Thank you, Scott. At this point, we will move into regular session, and now we call the board.
I'm Robb. I'm Robb. Here. I'll be going. Here. Stacy Kinder.
Here.
Shelley Moore, Zessa. Anne Presson.
Here.
Nate Thomas.
Here.
Anne Presson.
Here.
I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Dan.
Second.
Second, uh, Shannon. All those in favor would signify by saying aye.
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 Can you oppose? That motion carries. Uh, we have no public hearing this evening. Are there any individuals here who wish to make comments for any item that is listed on the agenda this evening? Okay. If that's not the case, then we'll move right into the contingent, Eric. Bill number twenty-one dash eighty-six, an ordinance approved for record plat for our subdivision number one, an ordinance approved for our subdivision number one. Bill twenty-one dash eighty-seven, an ordinance, chapter twenty-five, that pro ordinance is a state Cape Herald's very regarding stormwater management facilities. An ordinance, chapter twenty-five, that pro ordinance is a state Cape Herald's very regarding stormwater management facilities. Bill twenty-one dash eighty-eight, an ordinance, chapter sixteen, and pro ordinance is a state Cape Herald's very regarding the state court automation surcharge. An ordinance, chapter sixteen, and pro ordinance is a state Cape Herald's very regarding the state court automation surcharge. Bill twenty-one dash eighty-nine, ordinance authorizing city manager to execute transportation planning consolidation grant agreement with Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission for Southeast Metropolitan Planning Organization expenses and state Cape Herald's very, an ordinance authorizing city manager to execute transportation planning consolidation grant agreement with Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission for Southeast Metropolitan Planning Organization expenses and state Cape Herald's very. Bill twenty-one dash ninety, an ordinance for corporate venture capital finishes for fiscal year ending June thirty, twenty twenty-one and state Cape Herald's very, an ordinance for corporate venture capital finishes for fiscal year ending June thirty, twenty twenty-one and state Cape Herald's very. Bill twenty-one dash ninety-one, an ordinance to Mexican land, the state, the state Cape Herald's very located at thirty-nine twenty and deal road upon request adjusted to maintain and carry, Cape Herald's to Mexican land, the city of Cape Herald's very located at thirty-nine twenty and deal road upon request adjusted to maintain and carry, Cape. Bill twenty-one dash ninety-two, an ordinance extending the boundary to Route Six, include property newly annexed into the supplements of the state Cape Herald's very. An ordinance extending the boundary to Route Six, include property newly annexed into the supplements of the state Cape Herald's very. Bill twenty-one dash ninety-three, an ordinance, chapter three, the pro ordinance is a state Cape Herald's very regarding selling newly annexed property located at thirty-nine twenty, local roads are one, single families, or residential district. An ordinance, chapter thirty, the pro ordinance is a state Cape Herald's very regarding newly annexed property located at thirty-nine twenty and local roads are one, single families, or residential district. Bill twenty-one dash ninety-four, resolution authorizing city manager to execute an agreement firm by our concreators in for the concrete street repair twenty twenty-one project in the state Cape Herald's very. Bill twenty-one dash ninety-five, a resolution authorizing city manager to execute license and indemnity agreement for town capings for banners and holiday decorations on civilian property in the state Cape Herald's very. Bill twenty-one dash ninety-six, resolution acknowledging receiving annexation petition from J M D Industries in for property located at five thirty County Road three seventeen, and setting public hearing regarding the proposed annexation. You have before you the contingent, and there is item thirteen, the approval of naming fresh application for the Cape Rock Water Campaign. Why are you all here? You have before you the contingent.
So moved.
Motion by Robbie, second, by Dan. Any questions?
I can think of no finer thing than to name that after Kevin. I, I think I, I can't remember when I met Kevin, loved talking to him, always had a good chuckle with him, very hard worker, out whenever no one else wanted to be out, always at the front of the line, never at the back of the line, and, uh, you should all be very proud. He would've won, kinda. And without that, you all know that already.
And it's not just for his commitment to Alliance or to the, his role in public work, it was his commitment to the city at large, and there's, you continue to hear stories about Kevin and the different things that he did, and he was quite a remarkable man.
He was a cake.
And so this is a great honor for him.
He loved working with you all, too.
He did love CD much, though, did he?
I did, so.
I mean, he had the office. He hated Dennis, but he liked working with him.
Well, anyway. We have before you the consent agenda, and, uh, hope for discussion, all those in favor would signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. New ordinances, bill number twenty-one dash ninety-seven, an ordinance authorizing acquisition of temporary construction easements and rights of way for various property owners for the independent street project in the state of Cape Herald's very.
So moved.
Motion by Dan.
Second.
Second by Shannon. Any discussion? A long-awaited project. If not, all those in favor would signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Bill number twenty-one dash ninety-eight, an ordinance authorizing issuance of special tax bill for property located at five twenty-nine South Benton Street for demolition of a dangerous building and for the abatement of a nuisance under provisions of chapter seven, chapter thirteen of the pro ordinances of the city Cape Herald's very.
So moved.
Second.
Dan? Mayor? Any discussion? Another wise decision to get rid of the dangerous property.
Just as a side note, I hope, I mean, this is good to see these efforts continue to go with these light properties put out with Steve's retirement. I can only hope that the momentum is not lost, 'cause I know he played a big role in that also, so I hope we continue to be able to use the nuisance abatement for these light properties.
We need to do that. All those in favor would signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Bill number twenty-one dash ninety-nine, an ordinance approving the record plat of R and B subdivision.
So moved.
Motion by Dan. Bill for Stacy. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor would signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Arguments, the board to the Board of Appeals, uh, Mr. Eric Geringer, all entertain a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Dan.
Second.
Second by Nate. All those in favor would signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Reportments to the Public Library Board of Directors, and we have chosen Stacy Go Online, Cynthia Rang Schmidt, and Eric Redinger. Right hand motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Robbie, second by Dan. All those in favor would signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Mayor, I would add on that, that those were three incumbents, and, and if we did have an opportunity at some point, I would recommend Jessica over that.
I totally agree. Okay, I will entertain a motion, and we adjourn to closed session to discuss legal acts of litigation, competence, communication, legal counsel, per cent, or revise section of very six, skin, portion one, one. So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.